Order our meeting. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting. It's December 21st, 2021. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sax.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley is under the weather, so she will not be joining us today. Commissioner Sax, would you please give us the invocation and pledge?
Let us bow our heads. Dear Lord, we in Palm Beach County team are a family. When a family loses one, we all suffer and mourn their loss. So let us be reminded as we go through our prayer today that there are many in our family of Palm Beach County team who are not with us today. In eternal God, in these troubled times, when anxiety runs high and frustration runs deep, in the face of political transitions and an economy writhing in disarray, we are grateful for reminders of your presence with us, your love for us, and your grace towards us. Teach when we think that we do not have enough of this, that, or the other to be more grateful for what we do have than fearful about what we don't, and more appreciative of what we have left than embittered over what we have lost. Show us, oh God, where we need to be more swift to bless than to belittle, more quick to love than to loathe, and in the season of Thanksgiving and the holidays, more generous in our offered compassion to the forgotten and forlorn. Make our lives the answers to the very prayers that we offer in your most holy name. Let us say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sax. That was very well said. Okay, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions to our agenda?
Mayor, yes. On page seven, three B two, we have a revised motion, a change of date. On page forty, we have an add-on, a COVID-19 update by Dr. Alonso. On page forty-one, four A one, we have a revised motion as well. That completes the addition, deletion, and substitution sheet.
Thank you. I'm going to look for a motion to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. Show that approved six-zero. Okay, we are now going to move on to our consent agenda. We do have two cards for the consent agenda. Is anybody on the dais wanting to pull anything off the consent agenda? I see nothing. Let's go to our cards. Commissioner Kerner, would you please call our speakers?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On agenda item, consent agenda item three C four, we have Andrew Hurtel. It looks like it was submitted online, Mr. Mayor. Did you want me to read a summary of the concern on three C four?
If you could just distill it down, that would be great.
The concern relates to safety. It's a first, I guess, the implementation and design of the traffic separators. He has concerns about regarding them being concrete. It will greatly hinder the ability of drivers to quickly get off the busy, near-capacity roadway.
We'll receive and file that.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. David Webb on three K two.
On three K two. All right, so Andrew, you're up first. I'm sorry?
David Webb.
Oh, David Webb, okay, sorry. Mr. Webb?
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Mayor, I am grateful to be here and see your job as a great privilege and responsibility. Thank you for serving. It's no easy task. I was here once before in September. This is item three K two, award for well-field improvements. I ask that it not be awarded as recommended and change the SBE bid evaluation procedures and rebid the project in order to add more spending control by the county and improve the SBE program. What I've found through this experience, where my, the company I work for, I created a bid, submitted it, and it was rejected, considered non-responsive, and the award goes to the next highest bidder, which, you know, is purely for SBE purposes. In this case, the county is going to award to the next highest bidder for $922,000 for two forms not being filled out correctly on the SBE side. That's the only reason. Two-hundred-million-dollar budget, a million dollars here, there, you know, it's a small amount. I get it. In May, 1.8 million on another contract was given to the next highest bidder for this reason. I like the SBE program, helping small businesses, good. The forms are just to track money from the government, from the county, to the, to the small businesses. Those are those forms. They're made to track compliance. Well, in this case, they're disqualifying a contractor, and there's no spending limit. There are limits in the program, such as 10% and $100,000 between local and small businesses. So there is some concern for spending in other areas, but in this situation where it's non-responsive or responsive, there's no limit. And it's $3 million this year. I don't know how much the year before, or if anyone's tracking the cost to be able to track SBE spending, but it's there. The program is to help disadvantaged businesses, promote competition. Okay, in this case, we are in SBE, the second bidder is not. We are disqualified for two forms, SBE, and it's given to a bigger contractor, which ends up being the only bidder. So not really consistent with the overall SBE program. So that's why I'm asking, not award, spend some time, look at it, see if it can be improved, in hopes of better spending control and a better SBE program. So, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. We appreciate your remarks, and the commission has heard you. Nobody has requested time to respond. We had been updated on this by the county administrator, and we are satisfied that the proper procedures were in place, and we are sorry that it was deemed non-responsive, but those were the decision of the staff.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Marino, seeing no further discussion. All in favor, all opposed. The consent agenda has been approved six-to-zero. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce our good friend, Dr. Alina Alonso. I was hoping we wouldn't be seeing you around here until after the holidays, but I'm hoping you're bringing some good news. So, Dr. Alonso, you, please come up and tell us what's going on in our community.
Feelings are mutual, sir. So, I have the presentation. It's going to be brief. I just wanted to update the numbers so that everybody knows that we're aware of them. This was totally expected. Actually, the increase happened a week later than we expected. We expected it to come last week, and it's come this week. So, let's go ahead and get started. Let's take a look at nationwide. You see that the cases are really going up, as are the deaths, which is not our problem here in Palm Beach County. The, we also have the percent, our percent is above 70%, but not as high as the national. We're at 73, they're at around 70. So that's been fluctuating. Remember that we've added the five-year-olds, so that's another 200,000 people that we added to the population, so it dropped a little bit, so that's normal. What has increased significantly, we went from moderate in the yellow to high community transmission in one week. We have had a very high number of cases, and I'm going to go through that in more detail. This is what the country looks like now. If you remember, we were having a lot of yellow down the bottom. That yellow is quickly eroding and turning from yellow right into red. We have four metro counties now that are in high, in the red. We went from yellow right to red, and Monroe County are all in the red. So that is Dade, Broward, Palm Beach County, and Orange County. Hillsborough remains in yellow in, in the Tampa area. I mean, I'm sorry, it remains in substantial, in the light orange. So you can see it there on the corner. You can also see Puerto Rico and the other islands that were almost getting ready to turn into a lot of blue. You see them all going up also. In terms of the percentages and the variant that everybody's worried about, we now see that the Omnicron has taken up a 2.9%. So it's, it's going up a little bit in the percentage. I think it's way under-reported because of the mild symptoms that it gives, so I'm really not concentrating on how many cases we have because most people who only get a mild symptom don't even go get tested. So I am sure that there's a lot more around than what we're seeing, but the Delta remains the predominant variant, and at, you can see that it's at 96.8%. So it still has a long way to go before it becomes the predominant variant. The vaccines and all are monoclonal. Everything is working against the Omnicron, just as it is against the Delta. So that has not changed. These are our numbers. As you can see, last week, we had 2,445 cases. That was a huge increase. Our positivity went up very high, went 3.9% up, up to 6.5, and our cases per 100,000, remember, we had to be below 50 to get into the moderate, went up to 164.5 per 100,000. So that went up by 101 points. You can see the numbers below for Florida that are slightly lower than ours, and that's because our main height in the numbers is the southeast region, as it always has been because they're the most populated area. So Dade and Broward are leading us, and we're in the third place. Our cumulative data is down below, and you can see that we have the 73% of the total vaccinated. That's five and above. That, that chart remains a little, I should say, five-plus. And the total positivity, the cumulative, is at 18.9. There's been no change in that. This shows you where we have to be again, just to remind everybody that in order to be low, you have to be less than 5%, but you also have to have the 100,000, the number of cases per 100,000. So we, since we are at 164, that means that we are in the high, and we're in the moderate for the percent positivity. So when there's two different numbers, you take the highest number. So that puts all of southeast Florida in high. This is what our cases, and I'm sorry I did, this is way, way too light. You can't see it, but maybe you can see it if you have the handouts. This is our, our numbers that we had, and as you can see, last week, we took this huge exponential increase. Is it going to continue rising in the same form, or are we going to peter off, or are we going to curve? It's still too early to tell, but by the numbers of people that are testing all of our sites, and we were very wise in keeping all our sites open, including our monoclonal sites, those sites have had very, very high number of people coming in for testing. We're in flu season, so people are very wisely testing for both the flu and the COVID at the same time, and I am reminding everybody, if you get sick, if you have a cold, if you have family coming over and you're sick, do not spread this to everybody around you. Stay at work, don't go to the party, don't, if people are coming to your family, stay away from them. Otherwise, you're going to spread whatever you have, even if it's nothing more than the flu. You're going to spread this to other people, and people do die from the flu, and they do die from COVID, and they do die from the variants. So please keep that in mind, especially with this variant being so much more contagious than Delta. This is to show you on a day-by-day changes. The, the column to the right shows the percentage change. So you can see that we really went up, you know, where we were having, oh my gosh, I'm pushing the wrong thing. When we were having about 100 cases per day, very quickly, it went up to 300, 600, 800. And then on, the reason I put this in yellow is because probably this has to do with this being Saturday and Sunday that some of these probably spilled over, some of the labs reported on Sunday instead of on Saturday. But at any rate, you can definitely see that this has gone up, and that's what it shows on that other exponential graph. So we are expecting, we were expecting this from the beginning, so we have had our contact tracers all lined up and taking. So far, we have completed 91%, which is above the, the goal. Everybody's working extra time. We've got people coming in, and we're hiring more people part-time to continue doing as we go up. Our numbers are way lower than Miami and Broward, so I'm grateful for that. I, I wouldn't want to be in their shoes right now. They're really struggling. But we'll, we'll stay on top of this and make sure that we continue doing as much contact tracing as possible, and of course, our priorities are congregate living, nursing homes, and the schools, investigating those cases very quickly, and we have teams assigned just to do that, so that we stay on top of that. So, strategies. We have now the highly transmissible Delta and the more transmissible Omnicron, so we need to be very careful. We know that this is spreading across the globe in the United States, causing breakthrough cases, so please beware of that. It's not just about you as an individual. You may be well, but if you have it, especially if it's mild and you don't realize it, you're going to spread it to hundreds of people. So avoid crowds, watch where you're going, be very careful over the holidays with the elderly that you're visiting or having coming over, be careful with people that you might know that are immunocompromised. This is very important. You will spread this to many more people than before, so please, please be very careful. The hospitalizations are increasing, but they're stable here in Palm Beach County. We're very happy to hear that. We're staying in close contact. Verdinia Baker and the county administrator and everybody else in the county is working with them and having frequent meetings, and they are stable, and we're keeping track on that. The expected winter spike is here, so don't let your guard down. Please be proactive. All these things that I'm talking about are very important. Do not go to work if you're sick. Get tested for both the flu and the COVID. There's no distinction between the two. So they, they have the same symptoms. So get tested for both things so that you know and that you protect yourself and your loved ones and the people around you. The vaccinations and the boosters remain the most important tool to stop the spread of this virus and save lives. The other piece is not to forget the monoclonal therapy. If you get a positive COVID and you are at high risk, or you're elderly, you need to go for the monoclonal therapy so that it can protect you from having to go to the hospital. And there is a short supply of it now because it's been so nationally promoted, so a lot of people are taking it. We ran out of supply, I believe, yesterday. We're getting more supply on Wednesday, and it's going to be available not only at the Westgate Rec Center, but it's going to be available at all the CDR sites, all our 10 sites. So be able to get tested and/or get the monoclonal therapy. The, the sites are going to be open, are only going to be closed on Thursday and Friday. I think that's an easier way to say it. They will be closed on Christmas Day and the day before, which is Friday, since it's a federal holiday. And I'll just be open for questions. That's what I have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alonso, and obviously, there's a great deal of interest in this, three cameras in the, in the chamber today, and I know it's not for the rest of our agenda. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Alonso, you mentioned the monoclonal antibody. Can you kind of like, just, you know, explain to the public what it is, and, you know, why should they seek that, and kind of like, why are we opening up to have it not just at the Westgate and also throughout the different sites, please?
Sure. The monoclonal therapy is a emergency use authorization therapy that provides man-made antibodies to go into your body, either through an infusion or through multiple shots. A new form is being made, but it's not available yet, and that, those antibodies do exactly what the vaccine would do. Instead of natural antibodies that your body makes, it gives you artificial antibodies, and that helps you then to fight off the virus, and that's how it works. So if you are at high risk, even if you've been, if either you have had COVID, because remember, if you've had COVID, it's the same as the vaccine. Your antibodies wane, they go away, so we know we need to get boosters. So in order to do that, that's a preventive measure that you can take if you're in that high risk, that you may experience breakthrough and you may experience having to go to the hospital. You need to do it before you go to the hospital. If you wait till you go to the hospital, it's too late.
And so just follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, absolutely.
So, so if someone is high-risk, as you mentioned, and also if they're elderly, they shouldn't wait to get worse, and they should try to get the monoclonal antibody as soon as possible?
That's exactly correct. We were out, we will get more supply. Did I say that? We're going to get more supply on Wednesday, and we'll have it available not only at Westgate, but also at the other sites.
Okay. And how would the residents know that they can get it at the other sites? Do they still go on the state's website, or is it just, is it still walk-in?
They can just walk in.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
It's going to be limited. After they run out of the supply they're getting now, they'll have to get more, and the state is working very rapidly to wrap up and get us enough that we need at all, for all of Florida, not just for Palm Beach County.
Well, we care about Palm Beach County.
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much.
Doctor, I had heard that there was an oral medication that they were approving or going to have emergency use. Is that coming to Palm Beach County?
It will be coming everywhere. We don't have it yet.
Okay, very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Alonso, for the, for the update. And just following up on Commissioner Bernard's questions regarding the monoclonal antibodies. Yesterday, it was reported by Associated Press that Regeneron and the, one of the other manufacturers of the monoclonals are saying that these will not be effective against the Omicron variant. So is, are they working on a, a new version of this that will, in fact?
All the pharmaceutical companies are working on many, many different variations now of the vaccine and different options, but until they get actually studied and proven, we, we won't know that for sure. So I will remain silent on that issue until they come out and actually make the recommendations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marino?
Dr. Alonso, thank you for being here today, and wish you a happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Likewise.
One is, you said Thursday and Friday. Christmas Day is Saturday, so would it be Friday and Saturday?
Oh, my God, did I mess it up? Rewind the cameras.
Rewind.
They will be closed on Saturday and Friday.
Okay, so Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Correct. Thank you for picking that up.
Perfect.
You're my editor.
Now, if somebody wanted to go and get a vaccine, where are they going?
They can still get the vaccines at all our sites. There, there's not long line, well, there may be longer lines now than there were before. I hope people get this as a message that, hey, we, we really need to get vaccinated. You got to get your boosters, so we're emphasizing that. But all the sites have the vaccine, and of course, all the pharmacies still have the vaccines. Most of the pharmacies have you go through the drive-thru. They don't want you going into the, into their sites to actually do testing and things like that. So check with the specific pharmacy. You can go in and get vaccinated. They're doing the testing through the drive-thru windows, so that nobody sick goes into the pharmacies.
And I know we've had this discussion before, but, you know, we've talked about third shot and booster difference, and is it worth talking about, or everybody just go get your booster and be done with it?
Well, when you go in, you're going to ask for your booster. It's still recommend, I mean, it's still, you can, you should get the same booster that you got to begin with, but you're allowed to change if you so desire. So that is something, a conversation that you will have with the pharmacy, and they will accommodate your request.
But a booster is the same as a third shot?
It is in terms of what we called the third shot before. It was just whether you were healthy or not. The difference is that with the, with one of the vaccines, it's a little bit different. The, the composition of it has less vaccine in it. The booster is less strong than the original. So you have to make sure that you get the right thing.
All right.
The right amount.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sax?
Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning.
These new virus strains that are coming in throughout the country, are they basically different variants of the flu?
No, they're variants of COVID. That's what a variant is. It's the COVID virus that mutates just a little bit on the ends, just enough to make little differences. The Delta, for example, in addition to its mutation, it also has three other sub-linages is what they call it. So I call it the babies, baby deltas. So this particular one, the Omicron, has just the one, it's just the, the one variant. And the suspicion early on, of course, the first thing you want to know is, and that's why it takes quite a while, because you have to test it, to see if the vaccine's going to work against it. And so far, they have said that, yes, it does. So they're still studying it, there's still a lot more. I mean, these things take some time to check out, and, and your best protection is going to be to protect yourself and those people around you by not spreading it.
If someone needed to, felt sick, and they wanted to get the monoclonal therapy, and they were not able to go to a, to one of our sites, are these available at doctors' offices?
There are several doctors, especially infectious disease doctors here in town, that actually have sites that they utilize to give infusions. So any site that has infusions is capable of giving this, but they also have to have the supply. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to check with the specific doctors.
Doctor, would it be wise for someone to get the therapy as a precaution?
No.
Okay. And lastly, I want to thank you for keeping all our sites open. As we came out of the COVID nightmare, a lot of us were felt, I felt very assured to know that even though it wasn't such a pandemic towards the end of the COVID nightmare, as I call it, we still had our sites open for those who, who might be in the, in that segment of the population and didn't get tested or didn't get, didn't get the, the injection, so. I want to thank you very much for all you've done. This is the last session, our last meeting of the year, and I feel very proud. Thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Well, thank you. The nightmare is definitely not over, and this doesn't end. This is the fifth time we've done the same thing, and every time we do it, we see that it comes back.
Commissioner Marino?
Just as a follow-up, I, for New Year's, are testing sites closed on Friday and Saturday?
Correct. That's what we expect.
Okay, so Friday, Saturday this week, Friday, Saturday next week?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Dr. Alonso. We certainly appreciate you coming here today and giving us this update.
Well, I won't say I miss you a lot, but I do miss you.
We miss you, too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Happy holidays to everybody.
You, too. All right, we're going to move on to a public hearings. Can I have a motion to receive and file proof of publication? I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved six-to-zero. Show that is approved, six to zero. We're going to move on to item 4A1. I draw the commission's attention to the fact that we have a revised motion in front of us. This is a matter that we discussed already, been presented to us by the chief. I don't know if we need a presentation at this time. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the agenda, item 4A1, I'd make a motion, a revised motion as published in the agenda.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Weiss. Seeing no further discussion, we have no comment cards. All in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved, six to zero.
Thank you, Board.
Hardly had time to sit down, Chief. Have a happy holiday. A quiet holiday. We're going to move on to item 4B1. 4B1, again, is an item that we discussed at a previous meeting. This is on the EMS ordinance to relieve applicants of the responsibility to have audited financials. And I'm going to look for, oh, I have Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On agenda, item 4B1, I'd like to make a motion for passage and to thank Jay Albert and Alpert and all the members of the private security groups in Palm Beach County for their work on this. We appreciate you being here today, sir.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, no comment cards, all in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great holiday. All right. That's going to end our public hearings. We're moving on now to our regular agenda. We have an item here from Palm Tran. And again, we've had a presentation on this. I know Mr. Forbes is here. If there are any questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yeah. Unless somebody wants another presentation, I think we've seen it twice now. I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the 10-year transit development plan, major update prepared by Tindale Oliver, a consultant for Palm Tran.
I have a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Sax. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Six, zero. Have a very pleasant holiday, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on to airports. Item 5B1. We have a couple of recommended approvals on here. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item 5B1, adopting the recommended motions for A and B.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Seeing no comment cards, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Show 5B1A and B, approve six to zero. Have a very pleasant holiday. Okay. Moving on, we're on to 5C1. This is a resolution to terminate the interlocutory agreement with Sunshine State Governmental Finance Commission. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item 5C1A, B, C, and D.
All right. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? Show it as six, zero. Have a very pleasant holiday. Okay. We're on to six, I'm sorry, 5D1. This is Parks and Recreation. Does anybody want to talk about Parks and Recreation? This is the Orange Bowl Committee approving some. Why don't you?
Mr. Mayor, Honored District 6 Commissioner, I would make the motion to approve 5D1A and B.
And this is for the stadium out in the Glades, right? Okay. Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard. I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? Show 5D1A and B.
I have my light on.
Commissioner Marino, you're so quiet over there. If it wasn't for you, we'd be going to the test centers on the wrong day.
There you go. I just want to say how excited I am for Parks and Rec. You all do an amazing job. And I actually was being interviewed yesterday by Fit America and, you know, the importance of having our kids and our families physically fit and giving them all opportunities that we can. We'll keep them out of our hospitals and off of, you know, insurance claims and whatnot. So anything you can do to keep our kids and families healthy, I applaud it. So thank you very much.
Okay. With that comment behind us, and certainly I echo that comment, all in favor, all opposed? Show 5D1A and B is approved. Have a Merry Christmas. Okay. We're on a home stretch here. We're on 5E1. This is the county attorney. We have a compromise here, which has been presented to us by the county administrator. Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we all know, we've been briefed very thoroughly by the county attorney's office on this issue that's been outstanding with the area agency on aging. There were some disputes and concerns about invoices that they didn't pay. And the county attorney's office expertly negotiated a compromise settlement at an amount of 1.16 million versus the proposed amount that they failed to pay, So I think it's a job well done by our county attorney's office and puts resolution to this issue. So I'll move 5E1 for passage.
Okay. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Kerner said. We have the best law firm in the county, really. And it continues to show that they take care of business and so that we are respected. Thank you so much for our county attorney and your entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Show that the motion has been made by Commissioner Kerner. Vice Mayor Weiss has seconded the motion. All in favor, all opposed? Show that 5E1 has been approved, six to zero. And again, I echo the comments to our county attorney. Thank you very much for a job well done in this and all the other things that you handle on behalf of the county throughout the year. Well, that made short order of our regular agenda. Let's move on to commission district appointments. I'll go from left to right. Commissioner Sax?
None at this time.
Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner?
No appointment, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Marino?
None at this time. Thank you.
Okay. We have none for Commissioner McKinley. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move to reappoint John Kern to the zoning commission.
I have a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? That is approved, six to zero. All right. We're going to move on now to staff comments, administration comments.
Yeah, I have a few. I'll be brief. I want to recognize Kathy Scarlett, who is not in the audience, but she is on the phone and she's listening. Mrs. Scarlett is retiring. And we wish her all the luck in the world, good health, and that she enjoys that grandbaby, new grandbaby. But Mrs. Scarlett started out with the county attorney's office, where she worked for about 12 and a half years as the liaison to a number of departments, including Parks and Rec and purchasing. Her work was very successful. And so successful that she was appointed by Mr. Weissman as the purchasing director back in 2002. So she has served us very well, not only in the county attorney's office, but also as our purchasing director. She has seen us through some very challenging times, which included these last couple of years with COVID. Kept us on the straight and narrow. And I want to publicly thank her for all of her efforts. Her tenacity for making sure that all rules are followed, no matter who didn't want them followed. And she's done an excellent job. She leaves behind staff that are well-trained and also the county attorney's office that works closely with her, Mike Jones and Annie. So I'd like to also thank them as well. Her presence and her sense of humor, because we all know her. And she's definitely a character. And she has kept us laughing throughout these two years with COVID. Never a dull moment when Scarlett is around. So Kathy, again, from all of us, we wish you well in beginning this new chapter in your life. You will be greatly missed. So thank you. And we do have a few tokens for her that we will, we will take to her. So thank you, Scarlett, for all your years. Also, I'd like to recognize Craig Stevens. Today is his birthday. And he is our quiet person that just kind of moves around the chambers and makes sure we're all got what we need. Make sure that the public is safe with the microphones. So happy birthday, Craig. Also, I'd like to, since this is our last meeting, again, and thank you, Commissioner Sax, for your comments this morning regarding the loss of some of our team members of Team PBC. This has been a challenging couple of years. And we lost some really good members, either through death or they figured it was just time to retire. So the rest of Team PBC, thank you very much for all the hard work throughout this year. You're just amazing. So thank you again for all the hard work. Also, United Way, David will get me if I don't make the statement. We will exceed last year's contribution of 866,000, but he'd like for you to give a little bit more so we can make our goal that he established for us. So again, thank you for being so giving back to our community. You are truly, truly supporters and public servants of our residents here in Palm Beach County. And last, I'd like to wish all of you Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And I know that some of you had an awesome Hanukkah. So again, be safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, avoid the crowds. If you don't feel well, stay home and take your temperatures. So happy holidays.
Thank you, county administrator. And we'll do everything you've told us to do, which we always do.
Oh, I have one last thing. I'm sorry. I almost forgot. This board, through your leadership, gave us direction to create a code enforcement lien amnesty program. That program has run its course. We did a very successful program. We ended up with a total of 254 applications being received, and 213 of those were approved. We actually had a number of liens released, 255, for a total amount of 61,000 that was paid, that we did not waive all of the fees. But the total amount forgiven was roughly about $31.9 million.
Whoa.
And this has always been the board's preference, and that was to bring people into compliance, not necessarily collect money, but to bring people into compliance. And I think this was an excellent effort by the people that were not in compliance, that came into compliance. And so I, it was an excellent Christmas gift to bring everybody into compliance without paying. So thank you very much for your leadership this year and be safe.
It certainly was a Christmas present. Thank you, county administrator. Okay. County attorney?
I just want to take a minute to recognize Kathy Scarlett on behalf of the county attorney's office. Kathy has been a vital partner with us over the years. And she is a rare combination of persons who has the intellect and the humor and the tenacity to really bring home projects on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners and the county taxpayers in general. So she's going to be sorely missed, and we really did appreciate and do appreciate her. And also, I want to wish everybody happy holidays and thank you very much for your support of our office.
Thank you so much. And we, again, appreciate everything you do to keep us out of trouble. Okay. Commissioner comments. I'm going to go by district numbers. So Commissioner Marino, you are first.
Thank you. You might have seen it on the news, but we now have a new airline in Palm Beach County by the name of Avelo. And they are flying direct from Bridgeport, Connecticut, excuse me, New Haven, Connecticut, to here. So I was happy to go since I am a Connecticut native Husky, Yukon Husky, sorry. I know UF people. But Verdina, thank you for joining us. And it's just, you know, it's a pleasure to see other airlines investing in our community and knowing how much tourism is important to our county. So a shout out also to Discover Palm Beaches for being there. The port, after many, many months of negotiations and discussions, the port and Palm Beach County have reached an agreement for the lease of Peanut Island. So look for that in the future. We are so excited to have that under our wing and making it more, making it available again to all of those that have not traveled to Peanut Island, have not seen the bunker, who have not experienced what's been here. So I'm happy that that occurred. SFRTA, we're having a little, a little bit of an issue with Brightline right now, where upon inspection, it appears that the Tri-Rail trains will not fit on the Brightline platform down in Miami. So we're having some discussions and resolutions about that. And I'll bring you a report on that next month. And lastly, I've been getting a lot of calls about the University of Florida and our partnership with them and placing them on our land here. And I don't know if an impact study has ever been done on this. And I would be in favor of knowing what kind of jobs are going to be generated from this, what kind of revenue is going to be generated for the county. I am in favor of the University of Florida being here. I also would be in favor of the University of Florida maybe giving us some land up on the Scripps site. Actually, it's no longer Scripps. And, you know, some of the 72 acres that are in Palm Beach Gardens, that might be a good trade-off. So I just look for some more information. And that, and like everyone else, I wish everyone a very happy, safe, healthy holiday, New Year. Get your flu shots, get your boosters. Don't get anybody else sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick moment to thank everybody for your hard work this year. And congratulations on being the county mayor. I think we have a great year ahead of us. Wanted to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all of you. Oh. All right. Thank you. I have an off-site proclamation as well, which I'm excited to announce. Request an off-site proclamation declaring the second week of January 2022 as Supercar Week in Palm Beach County.
That's been seconded by Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Six, zero.
Thank you. And that's an incredible event in West Palm Beach on Flagler. So if you haven't been to it before, please, please attend. We'll get you more information on when and where it is. And then finally, thank you very much to our law enforcement officers and our firefighters and first responders, who will no doubt be working very diligently during the entire holiday period, and to the rest of our county staff that will be working, water utilities and the many departments that are activated 24/7, park rangers, animal care and control and the like. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Sax?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And as a family that really has both holidays, Hanukkah and Christmas, we are looking forward to a great joint celebration throughout December. And I want to thank my staff, Janet, Vivian, Jerome, and our new intern, Tina, for all the work that they have been doing to get me up to speed with the Ag Reserve Workshop. I look forward to a year coming up when we can have a lot of these issues that have been pending for years on the District 5 to be resolved. And I want to thank the, my seatmate to the left, keeping me, keeping me on board, safe, legal, and happy with everything. I think that whatever comes down, like our AAA bond rating, comes from above. And so we mourn the loss of so many of our, of our family members here in Palm Beach County team. But I'm very blessed to know that we have very good staff leaders, such as the county attorney and our county administrator. And so I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. There's a magic about Christmas that follows us since we were children. There's a glow and miracles of Hanukkah, and that spreads right into the magic of Christmas. So I want to wish my colleagues very Merry Christmas. I look forward to a great New Year, where we, we love Dr. Alonso, but maybe her visits to us will be fewer and fewer in between. So God bless everybody. Let's keep, let's keep us safe. us safe, and I look forward to our return in 2022.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And we come to Commissioner Bernard now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I'd like to do a request, an off-site certificate of appreciation presented to Mark Belisimo, and just wanted to note from Commissioner McKinley's office that Mr. Belisimo has contributed over $16 million to the Great Charity Challenge since its inception. So we'd like to request a off-site certificate of appreciation.
Second.
Been seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. So that is approved, six to zero.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, the first thing is, you know, Kathy Scarlett, I'm going to miss her a lot. As Denise mentioned, you know, she's, her humor, we're going to miss her at the EOC because, you know, during hurricanes or during this COVID, you know, just every time I go to the EOC, you know, she's always there, and she's always giving me a hard time. So we're truly going to miss her. Second is, I do want to thank the Budget Office and the Planning and Zoning for working together to do the lien release and, you know, saving, you know, some of our residents over $31 million, which is really important for us to continue to not rely on code enforcement as a budget, but more to keep our county beautiful. Third, you know, I enjoyed the Boca Raton Bowl, and I'm sure the mayor will bring that in his comments. So, but it was a, it was a pleasure to be at the Boca, Boca Raton Bowl this past Saturday. Fourth, I just want to thank the county attorney's office, Denise Kaufman, and your entire, your entire staff for the work that you've done this whole year, especially navigating through COVID. And our county administrator, Verdina Baker, want to thank you, whole administration and all of the workers of Palm Beach County for their dedication to the residents of Palm Beach County. And finally, just want to wish all of our residents a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and we'll see you in the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So as, as we are drawing to a close, I'd like to recognize and thank county staff for their efforts all throughout the year. Obviously, this last two years have been like none other than we've had, and they continue to rise the occasion, continue to keep the buses and so forth running on time, at the same time implementing the programs and mitigations and everything else that we've had to do related to COVID, and they, they're able to pivot on a dime and do so always in a really positive and, and helpful way, looking after themselves, their office mates, and our residents. I'd like to also acknowledge my own office staff of Niels, Paul, and Virginia, and the work that they've done all year on behalf of the residents of District 2. They're always available, wanting to help them solve or navigate whatever issues they may be dealing with, and, and so wishing them a very happy holiday and happy and healthy New Year. And to our municipal partners, we have so many of them, 39 in the county, that have worked together throughout the year with, with county staff and our board to move projects and everything forward. And lastly, to our residents, it's been an honor to serve you again for another year. It's one of, one of the proudest moments I've ever had in my life. So I thank you for that opportunity. And so with that, I'll just close by wishing everybody a very happy holiday. Those that celebrate, a very Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and a very happy, healthy, and safe New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I want to get some business out of the way. We discussed the last meeting. As mayor, I have gone through the assignments of the, each of us, and there were just a couple of tweaks on there. The assignments were distributed to each of your offices. I'd like to get a motion, receive and file?
One moment.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner, I'm sorry, a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, and I see a light on from my good friend, Commissioner Marino.
I believe on that list you had the North Lake Boulevard Task Force under my auspices. I'd like you to know that it has since sunsetted. So North Lake Boulevard Task Force is no more.
Unfortunately, these things are making it more and more difficult for me to hear you.
The North Lake Boulevard Task Force has sunset.
Okay, very good. Then we'll, we'll drop it off of our good list of things.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just with relation, and I'm sorry that I didn't review this prior to the board meeting, but I'm excited to inform you, if you didn't know already, that as the county mayor, you are in fact the chairman of Career Source Palm Beach County Consortium. And I don't think, and I hope that they can't delegate that duty to anyone else but yourself. So we may want to just reflect that on the boards and commission assignments.
All right. Well, if that's the way it is, then that's the way it is. We will go ahead and absorb that into the assignments.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you so much. I'm not sure that that... Merry Christmas, exactly. All right, now we've got the business out of the way. Do I have a, I had a receive and file all approved? Okay, good. Yes, like Commissioner Bernard said, we were very excited to host as a county and as a city of Boca Raton and a city of Palm Beach Gardens, because you had one of the teams up there. It was an exciting week. We were very excited to have Western Kentucky and Appalachia State here. We had a great game. We saw some tremendous talent in a young man by the name of Bailey Zap, who I think you will see his name again in the NFL. He really was a standout. It was a great game. I thank all who were able to attend. It was a great day, and I think our county looked wonderful to the worldwide audience that was drawn in. We were the first game of the day, which meant all during the day, as they were doing the other games, they would show the highlights from Boca Raton. So we have a lot to be proud of. We also have a lot to be proud of as far as a community that we have been so resilient. We're saying now that it's been two years that we've been under this pandemic, and thankfully, this latest variant is, seems to be less of a problem as far as sending people to the hospital than previous waves of this disease. But we certainly can't let our guard down, and I hope everybody will be able to enjoy this holiday, but do it carefully. And that's the only thing that I'm going to ask, that, you know, enjoy, but enjoy with respecting the fact that we still have this virus. I want to thank my staff, Lucia, Yalen, and Caitlin. You did a great job yesterday when we put on the lunch for our staff here. I want to thank you, the members of my colleagues here who joined me and, and helped serve. It's been a great year. As our former mayor, I'm happy to step in behind you, Commissioner Kerner. I hope I do as good a job as you did over your two years of helping us weather this storm, and hopefully the storm will be a little bit less in the year coming up. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Anything that you are celebrating, have a great New Year, and we'll come back next year healthy and happy. I call this meeting adjourned.